Everyone, I'd like to call the City Council meeting of Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order, and I'd ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And our special guest tonight for that are Girl Scout troop five six four five oh from Lincoln School. And so, girls, if you will come, stand right up here and face the flag.
Go, go, go. Shh, baby. I like it.
All right. You're going to start it out? All right, go ahead.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited and endless.
Well, thank you, girls. Thank you for coming out.
That's like done, girls. Very good on the volume.
And I will say we had a very patient group of Girl Scouts. They've been here for quite some time waiting, so. What? Oh. Am I supposed to share these? All right, I will. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out. We're going to have to have a fast meeting here, so we'll keep rolling. All right. We'll move on. Receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone? Oh, I'm sorry. Getting so excited about this. Roll call.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby, absent. Deuter.
Here.
Verimus.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Schenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Udara.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you for the roll call. Item three, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone who has a written communication that he or she would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand.
There's one posted.
All right, and we do, we have one posted? That one? Any other ones? All right. Public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for a public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have Dan Virgil.
Thank you. Mr. Virgil, if you would take the back microphone next to our police chief. State your name. Address is optional, and we would allow three minutes. Please proceed.
Uh, Dan Virgil.
You can pull that up a little bit if you want. You can raise the microphone. It just, it bends at the top. There you go.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Virgil, five ninety-eight, South Fairview. I wanted to say a few words about the, about parking, specifically kind of how it relates to the report from the Finance Committee. I know the Finance Committee's been working hard on this, and I appreciate their efforts. But I do want to kind of bring up some tangential issues to what they were looking to solve and suggest that maybe we, the city looks at this in sort of a holistic fashion in order to solve some of, some of broader issues that are involved. Currently in the downtown area, we have, what I've seen is quite a bit of surplus parking.
Would you come a little closer to the microphone? There's just a little background noise from out in the hall.
Yeah, is this better?
Can't close the door.
All right, go ahead.
What I've seen is there's a fair amount of surplus parking in the downtown area. If you, you know, drive around, particularly in some of the, the parking decks, as well as some of the, the lots, you'll see that there are, you know, quite a few empty spots in the parking decks. You'll see whole floors that are, that are empty or nearly empty. You know, I think a lot of this is probably due to COVID, but, you know, I think there's also a long-term trend of people working more remotely, so, you know, people commuting that may have been parking in, you know, some of the, the commuter parking, you know, there's not as much of that anymore, and it's probably on a kind of a long-term down, downward trend. Now, you know, even though we, there is a surplus of parking, there is quite a bit of parking, particularly in sort of the center of downtown, that is heavily, heavily used. I did my own sort of observations on this and driving around a few different days earlier this month, I noticed that particularly in, in the written communications, I've covered a lot of this in more detail, so I won't go into all of that, but some of the streets and parking lots that I listed have a utilization of ninety-six percent, and I saw that on three different dates. You know, it's very difficult to, to find some spots, you know, in like middle of the day and so forth, you know. Ninety-six percent, that basically means, you know, there's just a few spots around, and, you know, as soon as people leave, you know, folks will come in. One of the other issues that I recently became aware of was that there are some limitations in the equipment or software used for enforcement, where it has some limitations regarding the, the location of the cars in question. And I'm not sure I'm totally correct on this. I was a little surprised when I heard it. So if I've got this incorrect, you know, please let me know. But I think this has some issues with, you know, cars potentially overstaying their, their allotted times in the timed spots, two, three, four-hour spots, not being able to really be identified. And then also, what I wanted to, to say is that with the, the heavily-used downtown parking, you know, the, the folks that are parking, you know, are getting quite a, quite a benefit by it from being able to park in the center of downtown, perhaps close to, you know, whatever their destination is, stores, restaurants, and so forth. We currently, as the city, you know, currently gives that parking away for free. Obviously, there's a cost of parking, you know, as, and this is one of the, you know, gaps that the, the committee was trying to solve. The, the fees that are collected from permits and other things, daily parking doesn't nearly cover the, the cost, the, the maintenance of the, of parking, as well as the, the bond service that, that also is, is needed to cover those, and those are going to be long-term costs, although some of the bonds will eventually roll off. But it's still going to leave a, a gap, and that's what the committee was trying to solve. I do support the, the, one of the solutions that they came up with was raising some of the, the parking fees, the permits, the daily costs. I, I do agree with that, but using the money from the TIF, I think was the other recommendation, I, I would prefer to use the, uh, charging the folks in the sort of the center of downtown for parking. I think that would be a better long-term solution. And then finally, one of the things I want to mention is, you know, given that we have surplus parking, in order to address that, you know, would it be possible within developments, new developments, particularly residential developments that are done close to downtown, could the parking minimums be reduced or eliminated for those such that they may leverage some of the surplus parking that the city has currently?
Mr. Virgil, you're substantially over, so we have your written comments if you would close, please.
Yeah, that's, so that's essentially what I wanted to cover. I appreciate your time, and I hope you consider these thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Taylor Dreher.
Thank you. If you would speak from the same microphone, you can pull it down if you like. State your name, and address is optional. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Taylor Dreher, three thirty, River Glen. I'm here because I know that there was recent discussion among the council to reallow chickens in Elmhurst. And I know that one of the main points of why they were banned in two thousand and twelve, I believe it was two thousand and twelve, was because of the noise, which I think it's important to note that most of regular breeds of chickens don't make a substantial amount of noise, more than your average house animal, specifically dogs. I think our dogs would definitely, on our block alone, raise the decibel of noise a lot louder than most chickens. The differentiation there is roosters, which I don't think technically need to be allowed because that's specifically only to fertilize the eggs, which wouldn't really be the point of keeping chickens in Elmhurst. I think most residents who would be keeping chickens here would be keeping them for their own self-sustainability, providing their own set of eggs, farm-fresh eggs, and also learning animal husbandry. I think some main points that need to be kept in mind, as you guys discuss reallowing chickens into Elmhurst, is bug control. I think a huge part of keeping chickens, it keeps grubs, ticks, flies, and gnats. That's a large part of their diet, and so there's a lot less need for chemical pesticides. I know that Elmhurst really loves its green spaces. My, my house in particular, we're in the woods, and so it's, it's very important for us to keep the green spaces as well, which always leads to more and more bugs. And so that pest control is a huge part of why we would want to keep chickens ourselves, just as our own family. In addition, fertilizer, chicken fertilizer, the manure is super great for gardens. Again, with the green space in Elmhurst, I think that that can be a huge benefit to residents to have that manure from the chickens. And again, you're repurposing every part of, you know, what the, the chickens can provide for your family. I already mentioned the animal husbandry. I know, you know, I would love to, to teach my kids how to care for animals outside of the typically domesticated animals of cats and dogs. It, it allows you to kind of get outside into nature and teach you how to care for animals that are technically wild and not as much domesticated as the inside-house pets. And then finally, just the educational lessons that you can learn from keeping chickens alone, along with, with any animals that you keep, right? You, you get to learn a lot of lessons on how to care for them, how to feed them, what to do when they're sick, and it's a lot about self-sustainability of, of being able to provide for them. So I would love for you to keep that in mind as you keep that discussion going, to reallow the chickens into Elmhurst. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of the list of people who've signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment but didn't have the opportunity to sign in?
If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you. I reported weeks ago in regards to my concerns of the sound wall along two ninety that was adjacent to Lake Street frontage. Since then, the dangerous section of the sound wall has been removed, so I thank city staff, specifically the Public Works Department, for following up with the state to ensure that happened and happened in a timely manner. I also thank the state for doing so. With that, it seems to me, being a novice, but each of those sections are tied to each other, and once one section is removed, it increases the instability of the sections adjacent or next to it. As I drive along two ninety, I'm starting to see more and more sections starting to lean, and I'm making just this announcement that we need to continue to follow up with the state because otherwise I think a lot of these sections are going to be in the same state as the previous section that was literally, not figuratively, but literally dangling to follow along Lake Street frontage. But thank you once again for the Public Works Department for their consistent follow-up to make sure that happened in a timely manner.
All right, any other announcements? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. One final reminder for our April twenty-seventh, Elmhurst University Blue J five K benefiting Honor Flight Chicago and veterans. And another reminder that if we raise sufficient money through donations and sponsorships, I will be wearing these during the race, which I have not worn for twenty-two years and are absolutely as uncomfortable as I ever remember them being. So I both want sponsorships and donations and don't, but if you'd like to see me run painfully and slowly, please feel free to donate, register, or sponsor the Blue J five K run. So April twenty-seventh, seven thirty AM, runsignup.com. Thank you very much.
All right, other announcements? We'll move on then into our consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
Six point one minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on April first, two thousand and twenty-four. Six point two accounts payable April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, two million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Six point three, reappointment with Economic Development Commission, La Bounte, Pinkerton, Soane, Decker. Six point five, referral of Anok in an Armitage intersection evaluation. Six point five, case twenty-three, P O two island construction. Two forty, West Lake, final plan unit development and final plat of subdivision. Six point six, report requested declare surplus obsolete fire department equipment items. Six point seven, an ordinance authorizing the City of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase one two thousand and twenty-four Toyota RAV four hybrid LE and authorizing the disposal and sale of one two thousand and sixteen Toyota RAV four for the city's Police Department Investigations Division. Six point eight, an ordinance authorizing the City of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase one two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Blazer EV and authorizing the disposal and sale of one two thousand and sixteen Toyota RAV four for the city's Police Department Investigations Division. Six point nine, an ordinance authorizing the City of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase one two thousand and twenty-four Toyota RAV hybrid LE and authorizing the disposal and trade-in of one two thousand and thirteen Ford Escape four-by-four for the city's Public Works Street Maintenance Division. Six point ten, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and contract for the two thousand and twenty-four sanitary sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation project number twenty-four dash fifteen for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. Six point eleven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract of the streetlight controller upgrades project. Six point twelve, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional engineering services agreement by and between Clark Deeds, Inc. and the City of Elmhurst for the two thousand and twenty-four water main improvements project, construction phase services. Six point thirteen, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional Phase Two Design Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Trans System Corporation for the York Street Butterfield Road Improvement Project.
All right, is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for the purpose of voting against or for further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk Tamer, please call the roll on the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Deuter, second. Alderman Udara. Clerk Tamer.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby, absent. Deuter.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Schenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, two absent. The consent agenda passes. Committee reports. Item seven point one. Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council approve the financial plan set forth and adjust parking rates effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to approval by Metro and Union Pacific. The City Council directs the city attorney to prepare the appropriate documents. Signed, Alderman Noel P. Toledo, Chair. Alderman Chris Jensen, Vice Chair. And Alderman James Udara, absent. Alderman Rex Erby.
All right, may I have a motion to put this report before, to approve this report? Alderman Toledo with a motion. Alderman Jensen with a second. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will take the opportunity to go through a little bit of a summary of the report that we issued. I'll begin by thanking once again our committee for a very thorough and respectful discussion on how to approach this topic and solve this problem. Also, our members of staff who brought to us countless requests for additional information to ensure that we were reviewing everything that we could applicable to this discussion. I'd also like to address Mr. Virgil's comments. He did join us for at least one of our committee meetings and shared a number of pieces of information with us. I thank you for coming and participating and paying attention to what we're doing. I will say that in response to some of the ideas brought up, our committee did not consider a policy change of the magnitude of paid parking in our downtown as in scope for our conversation. That's certainly something that is a worthwhile item to discuss and, and could be done so either through the downtown plan review process and/or a referral from aldermen to discuss the possibility and the viability of paid parking in our downtown area. Certainly something that many members of the community would have an opinion on. With that said, I did want to go ahead then and summarize our recommendation tonight. I'll start off by addressing why we are here and why we're even discussing this topic in the first place. And the primary reason why we're here tonight discussing that is because in our two thousand and twenty-four budget that we approved, we did approve the recommendation from city staff to address and review the parking system. Because the general fund has been subsidizing the parking system for a number of years now, it was called out by staff that that really was not a sustainable financial situation. In addition, the two thousand and twenty-four budget does not anticipate that the general fund would be providing that ongoing assistance, and so if we were not to take action, we would have to go back and look at the general fund, possibly either cutting expenses that are provided for by the general fund or raising revenues that were not anticipated in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So there is a impetus to take a look at this problem now. The second thing that I'd like to call your attention to is the fact that the parking fund is one of the additional funds that we have that is considered an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund, as many of you know, but for the benefit of the public that's here tonight, is a type of fund where the municipality expects the fund to cover its own expenses through its fees and other revenues. That's different from a general fund, which relies on taxes and other revenue sources like sales tax in addition to user fees that may exist within that fund. And so the parking fund, for a number of years, driven primarily by the change in commuter behavior, has been underwater. It has not been generating enough revenue to pay for its own maintenance and debt service obligations. So our committee was tasked with looking at how we can bring this enterprise fund into a situation where it is once again covering its own expenses and not being subsidized by the general fund. And we first looked at the expense line items. The majority of the expenses are things that just have to be done regardless of the number of commuters utilizing the system. You know, gap, the, the rubber gaps in the parking garages, just cleaning and maintaining the parking garages. However, there was a line item in the expenses that we felt we could reduce, and what we are recommending in this report is to not fill the second parking enforcement position. That has not been filled. We've been relying on one parking enforcement officer. We have ample, we have around three hundred thousand dollars in revenue coming from enforcement, and we did not feel that it was, we weren't going to get an extra three hundred thousand dollars from a second enforcement officer, and it was an area that we could reduce expenses. And so we're not, that doesn't eliminate a active employee, it simply doesn't fill a position that was budgeted in this year's budget. Secondly, we looked at revenues, and we, early on as a committee, agreed that there were two major stakeholders to parking in our city. The first stakeholder are commuters who either live in Elmhurst or come to Elmhurst to park on a daily basis. The second stakeholder is our own residents and users of our business district. That includes customers, employees, our own residents, and those two stakeholders we felt should share in the cost of the system. That means commuters shouldn't pay for the entire cost, nor should just the retail customers or the residents pay for the entire cost. And so we felt strongly that our recommendation should reflect that fact and have both an element of commuter paying for the gap as well as residents and, and business users. So we analyzed a number of revenue areas. We talked about a increase in a property tax to cover that second stakeholder group. We talked about increasing the contribution from the Capital Improvement Fund to help cover some of the debt service. We talked about utilizing the TIF as a number of our parking decks are within the TIF. And then we also talked about parking rates. And tonight you see a recommendation that includes raising both the parking rates to address the commuters' portion of paying for the increased costs, as well as a recommendation to tighten our belt on TIF, the TIF budget, such that we can utilize those additional funds within the TIF budget to cover the other component and the other stakeholder group in our parking system. So the reason why we did not proceed forward with the property tax as an element for fund, funds for this is that we really feel strongly that we want to reserve the, the tax levy for unknown emergencies and also for increases in our pension obligations. And so the more that we put onto the tax levy, the less flexibility the levy has for the uses such as the pension obligations. The other reason, and then the reason that we did not think that we wanted to increase the contribution from the Capital Improvement Fund is because the Capital Improvement Fund does already contribute around nine hundred thousand dollars a year to the parking system, and if we were to increase that contribution, we would be having to cut other projects in the capital plan, such as, you know, our street resurfacing programs. And so we just didn't feel that either of those were the ideal places to go for those additional revenues. Finally, we felt that the TIF, the, the areas where we were able to tighten the budget are going to be minimally impacted in terms of our residents and our businesses. The grant program, bringing that down from two hundred and seventy to one hundred and fifty, we have not met granted an amount above a hundred and fifty thousand, and in fact, for the past two years, it's been substantially lower than that. So we don't feel that that is going to risk any of our businesses flourishing. And then also, as it relates to reducing the streetscape budget in the TIF, we, that, we can just make our garbage cans last a little bit longer and our park benches last a little bit longer, and when we do the eight million dollar street resurfacing project in the downtown TIF, there might, maybe we could find a little bit of wiggle room if we have some major needs for the streetscape. So we, we feel that the areas that we've tightened the TIF budget are low-risk to city operations and businesses' success. So that was a very long-winded overview, a little bit longer than my normal overview, but hopefully I've addressed a number of the questions that I've heard from some of the aldermen, and I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Toledo, discussion. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I am a commuter shareholder, I think's the term that was used, two to three days a week to downtown Chicago. And compared to colleagues that I work with, you know, I, I feel, you know, very blessed or fortunate with, with the parking situation in Elmhurst to support commuter travel. It's conveniently located, and, you know, as the report states, for fourteen years, it's been two dollars. And I, I think even though, you know, I'd rather pay two dollars, I, I think it's very reasonable, when you factor in inflation over fourteen years, an increase of a dollar seems extremely reasonable to me. And as I knew this was before committee, I, I also felt that a commuter shouldn't bear the, the, the full cost of this either. So, so I was pleased to see in the report the balance and, and very thoughtful approach to, to how the committee looked to solve for the problem. I agree with the decisions that, that were made across the board in the report. I really do appreciate the, the lengthy discussion that must have occurred to, to vet all this. So because of that, I'm in support of the report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, the Finance Committee report is detailed and thorough. I appreciate the committee's analysis, and I appreciate the information from staff that guided this report. I have two concerns that I shared with committee members early in their deliberations. One, that it's a big parking increase. their deliberations. One, that it's a big parking increase, coming on the heels of a water rate increase, that that might be asking too much from residents. And two, although our parking system is an enterprise fund, I don't think we should expect user fees to cover the costs of the parking system. By design, customer parking is available at no cost to users. In my opinion, the committee's recommendation relies too heavily on user fee increases. Ultimately, we want more commuters parking in Elmhurst, and I'm concerned that the fee increases will have the opposite effect. My preference is that we would continue to cover the shortfall from transfers from the general fund and capital improvement fund. If a parking fee increase is necessary to keep pace with inflation, then I'd like to see that increase be phased in over time. As much as I appreciate the committee's work on this issue, I cannot support the report. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I appreciate again all the work that I've seen done here. I know it was several discussions at committee level, and I do support the report as it stands right now. But I do think it's worthy to comment that I feel like something that maybe the committee didn't look at directly is missing from the picture, something that would help me understand it better, and that's the overall utilization of the parking decks. And I know that's kind of hard to understand, because we don't, as I understand, have a way to track total use of the parking decks. But I know we have a sense of the permits that are applied for and paid for, and also the monies that we collect. And what I don't get after this entire discussion is, do we have too much parking for the current situation? And it seems like the trends are going in a different direction. So, I mean, do we have underutilized parking structures in Elmhurst? And the upkeep is significant on these. So if we're finding ourselves in a situation where maybe we don't have to have the parking we built for, I think that's not the discussion that we should have right now in terms of this report. I support the report and the measures that were taken. But I wish I had a sense of that now. And as it stands right now, I can't tell you what our parking looks like. Are we using our structures? I know I've talked to staff a little about it, and they've mentioned the concerns and difficulties with keeping track of parking structure utilization. But I think that's really important, that we circle back to and really get a sense of, do we need the structures we have? So with that being said, I do appreciate the ways in which we're going to make up for the shortfall. But I hope that long-term, we look at, do we need the infrastructure we have in place overall? Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Clerk Tammer?
Bastido?
Aye.
Dardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby, absent. Deuter?
No.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Schenko?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill, absent. Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
11 ayes, 1 nay, 2 absent.
11 ayes, 1 nay, 2 absent, report 7.1 passes. Onto reports and recommendations. Mayor Levin, I have three. The Walk and Rollers Working Group is coordinating with our Police and Fire Department a bike ride safety day that will be Sunday, May 5th, at 10 a.m. at Safety Town, which is at York and Prairie, York at the Prairie Path. Details are on the city website for the Bike Ride Safety Day. The Senior Citizens Commission is hosting a community conversation on May 4th at 10 a.m. at City Hall, right here. The mayor is speaking at that event, so invite all seniors to come out and to that event. And finally, I want to thank our first responders and the aldermen, the many aldermen who appeared for the memorial groundbreaking for our fire department, First Responders Memorial, I should say. The committee has some brick pavers that are still for sale to be engraved and placed surrounding the sculpture. So if you want to go to elmhurst.org, First Responders Memorial, I should do it technically, elmhurst.org/firstrespondersmemorial, if you're interested in purchasing one. That is my announcements for this evening. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Two reminders. First, that vehicle stickers are on sale, and they must be displayed on the vehicle by May 1st. So if you could share that with constituents via your social media, we'd appreciate that. Second is that, the second item that I have is that there's two more spring cleanup days, which are held on the next two Saturdays. This Saturday, April 20th, will be for those with a Thursday pickup, and April 27th is for those residents with a Friday pickup. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports or recommendations? All right, is there any other business to be brought before the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Schenko with a motion. Alderman Dardini with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.